Welcome to the public hearing of the zoning board of appeals for the village of Southampton, Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
So.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Joyce Jiffer will join us as soon as she can. For anybody in the audience who might be waiting for or in attendance because of case number three, one, two, five, Michael and Kathleen Anderson, forty-one Van Brunt Street, that case will be adjourned, as well as case number three, one, two, four, Lux Construction and Design LLC, eighty Harvest Lane. Those two cases are being adjourned later in the evening, so just didn't want anybody to have to wait for it and then find out that the case was being adjourned. So I think we have some pending decisions on which to vote. The first is case number three, one, two, three. Stephen and Melissa Shapiro, seventeen, Toilsome Place.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you wish to wait on the vote on the decisions until Ms. Juffer joins? In case she was?
Let's see, one, two, I think we should. Just because she'll be here soon enough. Thanks for the suggestion. She'll be here soon enough, so we can hold off. I think that's a good idea. So then let's, let's move on to our pending cases. The first pending case is case number three, one, two, two. Ninety-three David White's Lane, Todd Grossman and Tamara Carmichael is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes. I have Mr. Ficetti here and I'm going to promote him to panelist. Excuse me, Chair, though, so this is not a work session or I know we discussed that, so is it official that this is a public hearing? Because I just have to change it in my notes.
Jeffrey, we're, we're properly noticed for a public hearing, I believe.
Immuted Jeff. Yes, we are properly noticed and we also have our plan around, so I'll just turn to him, Alex, just to confirm that everything was properly noticed for tonight.
Yeah, I believe that's right. I think they're.
We're good. We're all set to go.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm basing that on the information from the building department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Robert Ficetti for the applicant. Jason Perumba should also be on. If you could please bring him into the, to the panel as well, the architect. And then if it's okay, I'm going to share my screen.
Just let me make sure Jason got in. It just moved. Yes, yes, Jason, I just need you to turn your camera on and unmute yourself, please.
Everyone, Jason Perumba, architect for the applicant.
Okay, thanks. So I can see on the screen, on the screen, hopefully, as we had discussed last time, and as the, the Chair had asked to, to see, we have provided a fourteen by twenty-eight foot pool. No other changes. This is now our, our fourth hearing here. The applicant has really tried to, you know, to minimize this application. As you remember, we removed the, the garage and the, the pool house from their request and put those in conforming locations. As we understand is, is, you know, the, you know, the best way to, you know, to approach that since there are conforming locations. With the pool, as we've noted, the, you know, the, the conforming width is ten feet, seven inches. We're only asking for three feet, five inches to make it a safe width. You know, it's a, in relative to the size of the lot and considering the, the benefit of the app, the, to the applicant of having a safe, a safe sized pool, to be able to jump, kids to jump in from the side and whatnot. You know, to ask for these few feet, I think that, you know, the benefit to this applicant greatly outweighs the detriment to the public of, of, which I don't think is really perceivable of a couple of feet of distance of whatever it be noise or whatever to the street, distance. Which, you know, is considerable already. It's thirty-five feet, seven inches to the pool. You know, we've, we've done, we've done everything else we can to minimize the application. As you recall, I pointed out a pool down the road that's, was wider than this, you know, we're, we're not pushing for that. We're just looking for the fourteen feet, I think, you know. You know, the applicant deserves, you know, equal treatment, but at the same time, we're not asking for the, the pool at the width, you know, that we saw down the street, just this fourteen feet to, to get a minimum safety. For it, I think it's relative to the size of the lot, you know, we're nowhere near lot coverage. Maximum, it's, you know, it's, I think, I mean, Jason can speak to this, but I think that the proportions of everything throughout the lot, it's, it's a reasonable sized pool. We pulled back from the thirty-two feet, as requested, to just fourteen by twenty-eight.
I have nothing additional to add from what you said, Rob.
Rob, I just really have math questions. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it, you know, the way it's, it's illustrated now.
Okay.
But the setback is thirty-five feet, seven inches where forty is required. And so that's a variance of four feet, five inches, and correct me if any of my, my math sounds incorrect. That's a variance of four feet, five inches. But the sketch, the illustration shows three feet, five inches as the depth of the variance.
So I'm just, I'm just. Sorry, Mark, the thirty-five foot seven is actually to the coping and the coping doesn't count, so it's thirty-eight foot seven, and that's the, the discrepancy in, in that figure.
Oh, they call that the one foot difference.
Yeah, because you guys wanted to see.
One.
Yeah, because you guys had wanted to see the exact, you know, water dimension, because the original drawings we had showed the coping, that number altogether, it said a sixteen foot pool. And now, so we're, it's really a fourteen foot pool, so it's thirty-five foot seven plus one, thirty-six, seven, and yeah, that's, that's the difference in the math there.
So are we all then saying that it's a thirty-six foot, seven inch setback where forty feet is required?
Yes, I apologize, I misspoke when I, when I referenced the, the wrong number, I guess.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so it is.
And that's why you see on the southern property line, it says nineteen feet. That's actually completely conforming. It's twenty feet.
Yeah, it's the nineteen.
Right, because it's nineteen to the coping, but our code measures to the pool.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so the, so it's, it's a variance of three feet, five inches.
Correct.
Do any board members have any questions or comments?
I have a question about this, a safe pool. Where is that definition coming from? Just.
In my research online, when you get around the twelve foot range and less, you, you get into lap pool territory, they, they deem swimming pools twelve feet and over. But, you know, ideally, you know, it's much larger than this, but when you get any smaller than what we're showing, they call them lap pools. They're not really for swimming and, and.
Lap pools are for swimming. They're for swimming laps.
Well, yes, but swimming in a sense of having a family and enjoying a pool more than doing, you know, recreational laps for exercise. They call it a lap pool. There is a distinction between a lap pool and a swimming pool.
I think when you consider too that the walls have to slope in if you're jumping from the side and you're going, you know, if you go down, if a child jumps from the, off the side of the pool, that wall on the opposite side is going to be sloping in at the bottom, so I think you just want as much of a distance between that, you know, those two sides as possible.
You're exactly right, because the ratio, you know, when you have, let's say, a fourteen foot pool, the, the flat surface at the bottom is less eighteen inches each side, so it's like eleven at the bottom of area where you stand where it's not sloping. Because, you know, the bottom edges of a pool don't come to a ninety degree turn. They have a, they have a radius at the bot, you know, at all corners and at the bottom.
But it's not a techni, the safe pool that you've been referring to is not a technical term. It's, it's just a, it's a term you've, you're using tonight.
Right, you were just saying for safety purposes, yeah, just not, not any sort of term of art of safe pool, just, just for safety purposes, we, we think as wide as possible is best, you know, keeping in, in mind, obviously, the constraints of the zoning.
I guess I would also add, guys, that when you start to get into really small pool dimensions like this, it does have effects, and Jason touched on this, on the construction of the pool and the slopes and the deep end, the, the possible depth that can start to be unexpected. If you're used to a nor, a regular sized pool or normal sized pool, like when you jump into something this small, you know, the deep end comes up quick on you.
Luke, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
And Julia or Susan, do you have any other questions?
No, I've made all my previous comments at, at earlier hearings of a particular property. There's nothing that's changed particularly.
Okay, Rob, Jason, do you want us to motion to close for decision?
Yes, I mean, unless there's any other questions, I think, you know, as I said, it's our fourth hearing. We've done everything we can to try to minimize the impact of the pool while still preserving safety and, and this is, I think this is, you know, the best we can do, the best we can do to, to balance all of that.
And what's the total square footage in the, in the variance? Can we just magnify that?
Oh, yeah, Jason, so what are we, oh, it's, it's up here.
Yeah, ninety-five point eight.
Ninety-five point eight square feet.
Yeah, that's going down from almost two hundred.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to close for decision. Case number three, one, two, two, ninety-three David White's Lane, Todd Grossman and Tamara Carmichael. Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor of closing for decision?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Sure, no, thank you. And we're going to move on to case number three, one, one, seven, one oh four, post crossing. Hi, Joyce.
Hi.
So Mark, we'll finish the pending cases and then go back to vote. So what do you want to do?
You know, why, why don't we go to vote now? Joyce, we're waiting for you to to, to vote on the existing decisions, the pending decisions. So that's it, that's, that's what we can do now. Let's go back to, we have one pending decision, first case number three, one, two, three. Stephen and Melissa Shapiro, seventeen, Toilsome Place. We have a decision for that, don't we, that everybody's received?
Yes.
So I would make a motion to adopt the decision as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
And then let's have a, a voice. And Joyce, we're going to try to do a hand vote, too. All in favor of adopting and approving as written the decision in case three, one, two, three, seventeen, Toilsome Place. Approving a swimming pool with an eastern setback, eastern front yard setback of thirty-two point nine feet where forty feet is required. How does everybody vote? Julia, do you want to go first?
I'm voting to accept the decision as written. My hand is up.
And Joyce?
Aye.
And Luke?
Aye.
And Susan?
Muted.
Nay.
And I will vote aye and approve it as well, so it will be adopted as approved by a four to one vote. And that's case number three, one, two, three. We have also a decision written for case number three, one, two, one, one ninety-nine Cooper's Neck Lane. We have a decision for that, so I'll make a motion to adopt as written and approve as written the decision for case number three, one, two, one, one ninety-nine Cooper's Neck Lane. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor of approving as written the decision in case number three, one, two, one, one ninety-nine Cooper's Neck Lane. Julia, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Susan?
Aye.
And Joyce?
Aye.
And Luke?
Nay.
And I vote aye. So again, four to one in favor of adopting the decision as written in case number three, one, two, one, one ninety-nine Cooper's Neck Lane, denying the variance for a tennis court in the front yard, in the front yard setback. We also have one more decision prepared, which is case number three, one, two, six. Menton LLC, fifty-three Leighton Avenue. To approve a variance for a swimming pool to a northern front yard setback of thirty-five feet, not within the setback, but within the front yard, as well as pool equipment to a western side yard setback of thirteen feet where twenty feet is required. Can I have a motion to accept the decision as written?
So moved.
So moved.
And let's have a vote. Julia, are you in favor of accepting the decision as written approving the variances?
Aye.
And Joyce?
Aye.
And Susan?
Aye.
And Luke?
Aye.
Okay, so that is accepted as written by unanimous vote in the case of fifty-three Leighton Avenue. I would also, if we could, if we're ready, or at least open it for discussion, I would like to move to vote with respect to the David White's Pelletro case we just finished hearing. It's relatively simple, so I would make a motion, since we did close the hearing, would everybody be in favor of voting on that tonight in case number three, one, two, two, ninety-three David White's Lane? Where we have.
Where's the written decision?
Well, we wouldn't have, we would be voting to direct the written decision.
I think it's a great idea. I'm ready.
With last time with the one we just voted on, the Coopers. So.
So I'm just saying, so if there was a motion to vote tonight, would that be subject to a written decision then?
Yes, so it would be, it would be the motion to accept or approve the variance request for a swimming pool thirty-five feet, seven inches, I'm sorry, thirty-six feet, seven inches from the property line where forty feet is required. That would be the, that would be the variance request being approved. Do we want to talk about it? Is is everybody ready to vote on that tonight?
I'm ready. I think, as Rob Ficetti pointed out, we've heard the application four times now. Jeff could certainly write something up for us, but I don't know if it would change anybody's mind. And this isn't really a binding vote anyway, right? It's just to point the direction towards the written decision. And then we would vote on that.
It's a binding vote, and then we would vote to adopt the, the decision. You know, I'm just proposing the idea. It's, it's relatively simple. You know, in, in this case, and you know, my thinking has a great deal to do with the idea that they can have a pool. Their pool would be narrow, so what we're asking for here is, you know, an additional width to a pool of three feet, five inches. And then there's a balancing test, you know, my, you know, my view would be that having a somewhat wider pool is a benefit to the applicant, but once they have a pool, adding three feet, five inches to the width of the pool and ninety-five point eight square feet is, is not a, is not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, so that, that's why I would, I would vote in favor of the variance request.
Yeah, I, I agree. I wonder if there's anyone who has an opposing view who wants to give their.
I do, and I've been stating it for all four meetings.
I, I do, too.
That's not new news to anybody on, on this call tonight. I have concerns about this particular, there's just, oh, there's a lot, great deal going on. And I do believe it will change the character of the neighborhood, and I do believe it has the potential to be a detriment to the neighbors.
I, let, let, let me ask this when, when you mentioned that, because I'm, I'm looking at the detriment to the neighbors. If, if the applicant wanted to, they could install a, a ten foot, seven inch wide pool.
That's right.
So it's not whether or not they can have a pool. It's whether or not they can have a fourteen foot wide pool versus a ten foot, seven inch pool.
Not only that, Mark, but they could make it a lot longer, too.
Right, so I'm, I, I guess that's how I started to look at it. Is, is there a strong detriment to the neighborhood by the pool just being three feet, five inches wider?
I I think it, it is a detriment. Maybe it could have been twelve feet, but that was never offered. I mean, there are ways to do this, that, a lap pool, they made it sound, you know, a lap pool, plenty of people have lap pools. It, it's, and the sort of, I don't know, I, it's safety issues that I don't think really are totally well-founded. You know, some people have a pool where you cannot, that's four feet deep. There are all kinds of pools. There was no pool customer, I don't know, I feel like I'm not willing, I would have been willing to go to twelve feet, but that was never offered by the applicant. I thought it was greedy, and I don't think it's good. It's visible. That lot is jammed full of stuff. So I don't, I don't agree. I think it, it changes, it, it's a detriment to the neighborhood to make anything bigger. It's already a lot of big stuff. That doesn't need to be, they, the thing is, they have the right to have a pool, and it's actually swimmable. So that's where I feel like, what's, what's with the variance?
Joyce, where are you on this?
You're muted.
Um. I I, I, I find it to be a little bit of a difficult one. I think on the whole, I do not have a problem, because I think it's such a minimal ask in terms of the variance.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll put it to a vote. So who will vote in favor of the plan as presented, which is a a variance of a, a, a pool of thirty-six feet, seven inches from the property line where forty is, is required, so it's a variance of three feet, five inches. Luke, how are you voting?
I'll vote to approve it.
And Joyce, how are you voting?
I'll vote to approve.
And Susan?
Negative here.
And Julia?
Muted, Julia.
Julie?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, I, I, I'm voting nay, but I, I do wonder, did you have to make a, a proper motion for it? I was just going to go through that after they finish and just indicate if, Mr. Chairman, if you were characterizing that as a motion to approve the application. And then if there could be a second to that, and there could just be a vote on that motion.
Thank you, Jeffrey. So I'll make a motion to approve the variance request.
A second.
Ninety-three David White's Lane, case number three, one, two, two. Can I have a second, please?
Seconded.
And then all in favor, we have Luke and I. Can you repeat that?
Aye.
Joyce, could you repeat?
Aye.
And Susan?
Nay.
And Julia?
Nay.
And I will vote aye, so we will, we will have a three to two decision there approving the the variance request.
And, and just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, what had been discussed prior to the motion, this would be subject to a written decision for the board, so I'll prepare that decision.
Subject to a written decision for the board, which hopefully we'll have at the next public hearing.
Yes.
So now we can move on and to case number three, one, one, seven, one oh four, post crossing.
Coming.
I have Linda Riley. This is my first public hearing with you guys, so do I just automatically bring them in, or do I announce who's here and then bring them in?
Announce, please.
Okay, so I have.
Yeah, yes, Linda, Linda should be brought in.
Okay. And I also have a Joan McGarvan as well here. Would you like me to bring her in?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. Linda, if you could just put your camera on and unmute yourself, great, thank you.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me yet?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say that my clients have, have been working on a revised plan with their architect, Brian Brady. They have prepared, actually, they've prepared a plan and, and revised it again. It wasn't ready to submit last week when the deadline was going on, and also they want to take the time, now that it is ready, to discuss it with their neighbor before submitting it to you. If that's okay, so we're planning on submitting shortly a revised plan that will hopefully be a better one as far as you're concerned, or from your point of view, or from the neighbor's point of view. So I'm, I'm basically asking for you to give us a chance to submit that to you.
Do any board members have any questions or comments?
None here.
Susan, do you have any questions or, or comments, or we'll just adjourn tonight for all purposes?
I have nothing more to say on this.
Julia, do you have any questions or, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn for all purposes, case number three, one, one, seven, one oh four, post crossing.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I just ask, Miss, the, perhaps?
And, Mr. Chairman, may I just ask, miss, perhaps if applicants, councilors, do they have a sense when they'll be submitting? Because I'm just wondering what, what calendar this should be added to.
Well, uh, uh, s- some of it depends, um. I mean, the, the deadline, I think, for the next meeting is Tuesday at noon, and Monday's a holiday. So it's difficult for me to say exactly when they'll get in. My clients did want to have an opportunity to talk to the neighbors and show them the plan before uh submitting it. Or, or at the same time as submitting it or something, so, I, I mean, uh, it could, it could be to the next meeting, or it could be for a month. I mean, I, I, what, what would the board prefer? I mean, we'd like a chance to wrap it up and, but do it neatly.
Well, I mean, there, there's one, and, and by the way, we should let Joan speak if, if she would like to. I mean, I mentioned at the last meeting, one, um, one consideration in, in, in Miss Linda. The board's view is it's not really a, a question of the, the two neighbors agreeing upon what's. You know, what's acceptable, that's of course one factor in this, um, in this hearing. But I would just caution, you know, the applicant, that regardless of an agreement between the neighbors. It still may not be agreeable to the board.
I understand that, I understand that, but, um, and I think my client does as well. That uh your decision is not going to be based merely on, on neighbor opposition. Um, it's going to be based on, you know, the, all the facts and circumstances as you weigh and balance them. Uh, but, but nevertheless, um, and, and we, we still, in any event, they. It took time to draw these, they were revised again after they were drawn the first time. It, it, it can take time to produce these plans and, and elevations and everything when they're revised. So we didn't get it in before the last deadline, which was last week. Um, you know, if, if, uh, if you insist, we'll get them in, you know, by Tuesday. Otherwise, I don't mind if you adjourn it for a month.
I would say take the time for you to give the best presentation. I just think to Mark's point, Susan's point earlier, um, is it going to be materially different than what we've seen so far?
It's going to be a one-car garage, it's going to have some different dimensions.
So less of a, less of a side yard variance request?
No, that's not possible. I don't believe that is possible. The variance request will be the same. I'm not, uh, it, I think the variance request will be the same. Uh, what they've been working on is reducing the, the length of it and reducing the height of it.
To, to, um, to Luke's point, yeah, don't, don't feel as if you're rushed, we'll, we'll look at it when we understand what we're waiting for. Um, you know, the, the caveat is just that, you know, perhaps reducing the length and. Height, although agreeable to the neighbor, might still not be agreeable to board. But, but we can't, we can't, you know, we can't weigh in on that until we see the, the drawing. So we can wait until, until you're ready with the drawings.
Would you like, would you like me to let Joan in right now then?
Um, yeah, oh, is that Linda, you said, we, we're gonna, we will adjourn for all purposes. But we should let uh Joan in and, and let you exit if, if you're, if you've completed your, um, your presentation.
Well, yes, but I may raise my hand if Joan says something I think needs to be responded to. Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll give way to Joan.
Just give it one sec. Okay. Joan, if you could put your camera on and unmute yourself, that'd be great.
Muted.
You're, you're still muted, Joan.
You're, if you're adjourning it for all purposes, and I don't want to take your time this evening, thank you so much.
Yes, we're gonna adjourn for all purposes. Um, does Mr. Raven want to speak? I think he's with you, right, Joan?
Um, he's with, I mean, he's virtually with me, he's not present here.
And is not out, Chair.
Okay, so, so then we'll make a motion to um adjourn this case for all purposes, do I have a second?
Second.
And then all in favor of adjourning case number three, one, one, seven, one oh four, post crossing for all purposes?
Aye.
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 Okay, case number three, one, oh, four, uh, fifty-one Pond Lane has been adjourned pending ARB review and approval. And we are ready to um hear case number three, one, one, six. Three seventy-five Oxpester Road, Ox House, one thousand LLC. Is. Is the applicant other representative here?
I don't have any of these hands up, I only have two people left in the audience, which would be Jason Perumba and Linda Riley.
And we didn't get any new documents on this either, did we?
No, I, I, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking, because I didn't.
Did anybody see any, any new documents?
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn for all purposes, case number three, one, one, six, three seventy-five Oxpester Road, can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have case number three, one, two, four, eighty Harvest Lane, um, can I have a motion to accept the adjournment? Requested by the applicant. Well, I'll make a motion to, to accept the adjournment requested by the applicant in case number three, one, two, four, eighty Harvest Lane, can I have a second?
Second.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, so case number three, one, two, four is adjourned for all purposes. We have case number three, one, two, five, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's request for an adjournment as well, can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will adjourn case number three, one, two, five, forty-one Van Brunt Street, Michael and Kathleen Anderson. And then that moves us to case number three, one, two, seven, Hampton Village LLC, two twenty Hampton Road. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Nope, I have no hands up, and just one left, one person left.
They did ask to appear tonight, um, so I'm surprised that they're not here.
Who's left?
Jason. I was on the agenda, thought they'd have two hours to wait.
Jason Perumba is the only person left.
Yeah, I don't think, I think he's.
That's, this is Lucy, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
I call her Lucy, hi.
The, this, this is the case where it waited the whole night uh for, at our last meeting.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn for all purposes, case number three, one, two, seven, two twenty Hampton Road, can I have a second?
Second.
And all in.
Aye.
Aye.